I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you'd all remain standing, please, for a moment of silence for our servicemen and women and those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. Clerk will call the roll, please.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Here.
Counselor Condon.
Here.
Counselor Crowe.
Here.
Counselor Lenihan.
Here.
Counselor McDonald.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley.
Here.
Counselor Sika. Counselor Simonelli. Counselor Spatafora. Counselor Winslow.
Here.
Counselor President Murphy.
Here.
Actually, we're being, hold on a second. Let's do this part. No, we actually want to do this part. Just for the audience and everyone to know, under the provisions of the open meeting law, for those of you in attendance, please be informed that UMA Urban Media Arts will be recording this evening's meeting. So just be aware, there will be audio and video recordings of the meeting. First order of business, guests.
I believe we have one person signed up for public comment.
Okay, so, public comment is allowed under the council rules. Each speaker is limited to the subject matter relevant to this evening's agenda and must keep their comments to two minutes or less. Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
I believe we do.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Galvin Murphy, would you like to come to the podium, please? State your name and address for the record.
Galvin Murphy, Sr., 24 Church Street. You're not going to be a secret.
One second. One second. They moved my setup on me, so this is, okay, there we go. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. May start over.
Start over again?
Please.
Absolutely. So, Galvin Murphy, 24 Church Street. Don't get me confused with the other Galvin Murphy that works for the city. Been a resident of Malden for 35 odd years, have a business here, and I've made aware that the city council has a resolve in front of them tonight to ask the legislatures of the Commonwealth to encourage them to pass a bill that will cause a study into rodent poisons. Okay, I don't like using that word poison because it sounds so bad. I would like to strongly encourage the council not to adopt this resolve. There are many reasons for it. I mean, right in the letter from Angel Memorial Hospital, it says that, you know, only licensed pest control applicators can buy these products is false. I mean, you can go online, you can go to the hardware store, you can buy these things. And as a professional pest control operator, and the owner of Yankee Pest Control here in Malden, I'm also associate certified entomologist. I'm certified in three different categories in the Commonwealth. So, I've been doing this for 40 years, so I'm very well versed in what I'm talking about. I think that there's a knee-jerk reaction right now, a lot of hysteria. Think about the bird population, the birds of prey, which is where everybody's concerned is. Think about that when you were young. How many of them did you see? They didn't exist. Of course, a couple of your young kids may have seen them your whole lives, but they didn't exist. They're back, they're flourishing, they're doing well. And so aren't the rats. And the rats are really tough right now. There's been hundreds, if not thousands, of patents on different products to control these animals, and we're not doing it. There's a lot of people saying that leave the birds of prey alone, that they'll control them. Well, they're not. They're the strongest we've seen, eagles and hawks, in my lifetime, and they're not controlling these rats. They're everywhere. We're all affected by them. It's education and not pesticides that's going to solve this problem. Right now, the EPA has Alpha Comment Period, new rules and regulations on how rodent bait will work. And once the comment period is done, it's going to go back for further study, and we anticipate that they will have it out to us by November of this year. And so with that, all bait for rodents will be restricted use, meaning you will not be able to buy them as a homeowner. You will have to go to a specially trained professional life control operator anywhere in the country, just not in the Commonwealth. And I think that's going to be the better way to go. I think that if this council thinks that we shouldn't be using second-generation anticoagulants, now, there's different types, right? This first generation, second generation acute kills, special products, this, that, the other thing. But the second gen certainly can hurt animals. They certainly can hurt birds. We don't doubt that. I haven't seen a herd of a kill of a bird of prey in well over a year in the Commonwealth. Okay? Mass Farm Agriculture Resources has a subcommittee under the pesticide bureau that oversees the licensing of these products to be used in the Commonwealth. And on that subcommittee, there's representatives for mass fisheries and wildlife. I think they would have their say in it at that point, and they could very well just ban all this stuff or make it restricted use now, but they're not. Along with the person that's in charge of MDAR pesticide, Tyronne Loscola, who oversees the enforcement of pesticides, she has come out and said, "It's the wrong time to start picking on these products with the rodent problem we have." There's a lot of reasons for the rodent problem, and I'm sure every counselor here has heard from somebody in their area about the rats. And if you want to take that away, think about what's going to happen to affordable housing. How are people in affordable housing? And that's my big concern. How are they going to afford to control rodents running through their properties? It's going to become much more expensive. I recently had another state that we do work for, Buds, Massachusetts, their purchasing person write me an email and said, "If we did away with this, how will it affect our contracts?" I said, "Multiply it by four to start, and then the exclusion work on top of that." So you can see, it's going to make it very much more expensive for people to do this type of work. But what I do is, I stand here before you today and ask you to please, I don't know if table is the proper word, or not approve this at this time, wait to see what happens with the EPA. There's no sense passing regulations on top of regulations when the EPA is going to trump everything that, you know, we do or the Commonwealth does. So I would just say that, I mean, it may be a good-fuel thing to do, but good-fuel thing isn't necessarily science that we should be dealing with. So that's all I wanted to express upon you, and I appreciate your time. I thank you. Does anybody have any questions for me about it? I guess you could ask me that anyways, right?
Mr. Murphy, this is just a comment period at this point. I did speak to the sponsor because, I don't know if you heard me say, we normally go two minutes, but I did say, "Would you like him to continue?" And he did want you to continue because we were very interested in what you had to say. So we do thank you for your comments, and we will be in touch if we have any further questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
The next order of business, please.
Paper 13-23, meeting, minutes for the meeting of January 3, 2023, and paper 14-23, minutes for the meeting of January 10, 2023.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? Motion by Counselor Condon, seconded by Counselor Winslow. All those in favor? Aye opposed. Those minutes have been passed. Nine to one, eight to one.
Eight to zero.
Eight to zero.
Eight to zero.
Okay. Get my numbers straight. Eight to zero. Thank you. Next order of business, please. Yes, please.
Paper 15-23, petition, livery license for Stephanie Lincona of 205 Bryant Street, renewal, one vehicle. Paper 16-23, petition, livery license for Stephen Alswed of 61 High Rock Road, renewal, one vehicle. Paper 17-23, petition, class one license for absolute auto rental and sales DBA Scoot Scoot New England of 495 Broadway, renewal.
On Counselor Condon's motion to refer to license, all those in favor? Aye opposed. The petitions will be referred to license. Next order of business.
Paper 18-23, be hereby ordained by the Malden City Council that the code of the City of Malden, MCC, be amended by adding Title VI, Chapter .20, Section .040, permit for exterior vending machines.
Counselor Crowe for the paper.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to refer this, and this is actually Counsel Spatafor, it really wants to explore licensing outdoor vending machines. I know there, especially like the water vending machines, I know in Counselor Condon's area that we've had some issues, so, you know, just to have some support in how we move forward with that.
On Counselor Crowe's motion to refer to ordinance, seconded by Counselor Condon, all those in favor? Oh, yes, yes, Counselor Condon, I'm sorry. I thought you were just, here you go.
Thank you. Do I have it?
Yes.
Do you have the mic? Yes, these things have really become a problem in the neighborhoods. People, the one across from El Portro, in that parking lot, people are coming there all hours of the night. They put up a sign from 7:00 to 11:00. They just ignore it. They bang on these machines. We have to do something about it. I'm not even sure where they get their water from or how they purify it, but probably we should look into the Board of Health going down there. But it's just outrageous that people should have to be woken up in the middle of the night because people want a gallon of water when they stop doing business. Maybe they have to put a fence around it and lock it up every night at 11:00 and maybe open it up at 7:00 in the morning, but it should not continue like this. I know they have one of these in Linden to W8, you know, but it's really been something that the neighborhood has been dealing with for years. I've tried working with them, the owners of Portro, who are involved with the parking lot, but they just give you the runaround. It's time to really dig into this and solve this issue. So, thank you.
So, on Counselor Crowe's motion, seconded by Counselor Condon to refer to ordinance, all those in favor? Aye opposed. Will be referred to ordinance.
Next order of business, paper.
Can I get added to this paper as a sponsor?
I talked to Counsel Spatafor.
Yes. Clerk, if you will, add Counselor Condon, please, to the paper. Next order of business, please.
Paper 19-23, resolve. Be hereby resolved that it is the sense of the city council that the administration and Public Works Commission explore alternatives to the current water and sewer rate tiers to bring more equitable rates to two-family and other multifamily homes, including but not limited to sub-meter account billing for individual units to reflect actual per-unit consumption.
Counselor O'Malley for the resolve.
Thank you, Council President. So again, this paper is inspired largely by Counsel President Murphy, who's been bringing this up for years. I've recently gotten a number of letters from residents just asking that we take a look at the tiers, take a look at the structure, is there a way to try to get billed per unit? It's also been brought to my attention that some apartment buildings are billing their residents per unit, but they're buying their own meters. So what rate they're using needs to kind of be looked at in terms of like, are they upcharging for water? Just kind of get a hold of that and really kind of take a comprehensive view. Just to be clear to the community, you know, this is not something that's going to happen overnight. I do believe the water and sewer rates are set every fiscal year, so July 1, 2023 is like the earliest anything could possibly happen, but it probably, and could also be way later than that. Really just looking to kind of get a hold of this. That's kind of what I did. I talked to our CFO, Chief Financial Officer, who's also our controller, Chuck Ranigan. He's going to be sending me some of the reports that people do for the city to kind of talk about how we should increase our rates. They do kind of monthly status reports. I reached out to City Engineer Ian Lip, haven't heard, and I was told I really should reach out to the Treasurer's Office, and I do see that we have the City Treasurer here. So definitely, if there's anything that he could present, I'd love to hand it over to him. But again, this is just to kind of take a look at it and move forward from there.
Thank you, Mr. Grover. If you'd come to the podium, state your name and address. Once again, as Counselor O'Malley said, this is, it's a very interesting topic, but it has a lot of facets to it, you know? As I was saying to Counselor Crowe earlier today, it's also, when you get into the tiers, it's almost like shifting the real estate taxes. So, you know, there's a number of facets of this to be understood, but I think it's, conversation is always good, and we should always go back and look at things to make sure we're proceeding in the right, you know, we continue to proceed in the right direction for our constituents, so.
Thank you for the time. Thank you for the invitation, Council President Murphy. I'm just here to offer a couple of points of clarification to maybe guide the conversation. I'm available at any time. Oh, my name is Dan Grover, the City Treasurer Collector, and I also live at 22 Wigglesworth Street, Mall of Massachusetts, and I'm a registered voter.
Registered. Could you pull the microphone a little closer to you?
Active, registered voter.
Mr. Grover, the microphone is on. Yeah, I don't know if you can pull it a little closer to you. There you go.
I don't know if I can grow anymore. Is that better? Is that better?
Yeah, okay.
All right. So I just wanted to mention a couple of things related to this resolve, just to, you know, head off some conversations so people don't start running down a rabbit hole. I agree with the Council President's sentiments that conversation and dialogue is definitely necessary to evaluate the rates that we charge our customers. It's important to note that our rates are determined primarily by consumption, that consumption that is provided by the MWRA, or the water that's provided by the MWRA, MWRA, and what our constituents do consume. So that is a primary driver of what the costs are related to. We are not the only community that does have a tiered system. The majority of communities that use the MWRA do have a tiered system. But more importantly, what I wanted to address is, related to the sub-meter account billing subject, right now, most, as far as I know, all home, new home construction and existing construction has one meter, and the reason being is because it's cost prohibitive to have pipes out of two meters going up to several different floors. You would have duplicative processes. You know, if you just picture a three-family, you'd have three meters and you'd have one pipe to the first floor, then a pipe to the second floor, then a pipe to the third floor, in every which way. So it would be cost prohibitive from a construction standpoint. Also, the state requires us to bill homeowners, the property owners, for water consumption. Water bills that are not paid, we have a collection mechanism through leaning real estate property. We're not allowed to bill tenants. Tenants can be billed directly by a landlord, but there is a number of requirements that the landlord has to comply with through the state. One of those things is, you know, a couple of those things is providing low-flow showerheads and verifying that the outdoor water spigots are not related to the consumption that are being applied to the individual unit owners, unit holders. And there's a whole litany of things to make sure that landlords are not overcharging or they are charging properly. And that is, again, done all through the state. So my biggest thing that I wanted to mention is, the submetering, it's not really something that we would really want to entertain getting into the business too because we can't legally bill tenants. It wouldn't allow us for a collection mechanism if we did bill a tenant and they moved unless we went to a collection agency, and that's not the most appropriate way to collect because we already have a mechanism through the lien process. And, you know, that's really the primary things that I wanted to mention. And if I'm available to any questions now, later, and I'd be happy to sit in any meetings and have a dialogue related to this. I think that brings all my points.
Just more information to kind of take into consideration.
Thank you very much, and those are all great information. There's a Ms. Nguyen in your office, I heard, that is also very informed on this topic?
Yeah, Stacy Nguyen. She is our Assistant Collector right now, and she does most, the majority of the billing. And we also have Gina Sheridan, who does the water billing, both extremely knowledgeable. But if you do have any questions, Stacy will be able to answer pretty much every single one.
I mean, when we have, I think, a more in-depth conversation, it'd be great to kind of invite, you know, whoever is willing to kind of come and meet. Super helpful information, yeah. For me, really, it was even just kind of thinking about like, how do we divide the tiers? And like, really kind of just taking that into, what I did hear, unfortunately, is that our consultant, who was helping us set these water rates, had passed away. He was actually rather young, and I do apologize for that. That's really unfortunate to hear. That was something I learned recently. So it's definitely something I think that is maybe a good time because there's going to be a change in terms of how we set the water rates. I think it's more being done more in-house right now, so there could be some ability to kind of be flexible. It's good to learn about the tenant landlord dynamic. That's helpful. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. That person's name was Doug Gardner, that one that passed away. He did help set the rates most recently, and unfortunately, he did pass. And like you said, we'll be doing something different going forward, so, thank you.
So again, I guess this is, I see light, so I don't want to stifle the debate.
Okay. So we have Counselor Condon. Counselor Condon.
Thank you, Madam President. I remember having Mr. Gardner here. Been before the council several times, and he set the water rates for years in this city, and basically, it was by consumption. But it's, this resolve is good to, now that we have a new consultant, to look and see how he intends to do it. So I'm happy to vote for this resolve. We might have him maybe before Finance or something, where it involves water rates. That would be up to Counsel McDonald. But I think it's a good resolve. Anytime you can look at something differently, maybe there's a segment of the population that hasn't been addressed, it's a good thing. So I'm happy to sponsor this.
Counselor Lenihan. Thank you, Madam President. I also want to thank the sponsors for this. I had had a great conversation with Counselor O'Malley to understand kind of the impetus behind it, and then utterly failed to meet the deadline to add myself, so I just wanted to be added as a sponsor as well. I think it's always a good opportunity to better understand things like this, you know, when you're new, and maybe when you're not so new. I think reopening a conversation, you know, it's, we may have new questions. I appreciate, Dan, you coming up and explaining a little bit about that, but I think if there's ever opportunities for better parity or equity, why not have that conversation and see if there's things that we're missing? The other thing that, you know, I was thinking as we were talking about sort of like tenants and submetering and thinking back to when I rented, you know, you don't pay that much attention to the water bill, right? Because usually you don't pay it, and then you buy a house and you learn how differently some communities handle their billing. And I think as we think as a city about not just what materials we have on our website, but what we provide to new residents, either the new resident packet that gets mailed out, or some of the tenant resources that we're working on in the Office of Housing Stability, maybe an info packet on just how submetering works, or kind of what your rights and resources are for tenants and landlords, since that can be, you know, an opportunity to educate folks in the community as well. So again, just very supportive, would love to be added as a sponsor, and thank you for the opportunity to learn more about this.
Thank you, Counsel Lenihan. Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Thank you. I just wanted to say I'm happy also to be a sponsor of this, and thank you for bringing it forward. We had a conversation about this, especially with, in the times now, with every, all of prices for everything are increasing, so any little bit that we can understand and be able to help if we can. The timing seems perfect with some of the new consultants, so thank you for bringing this forward. Happy to sponsor.
Counselor McDonald.
Just wanted to say I'm happy to schedule a time with the Treasurer's Office when, maybe when this is a little further along and there's more to report back, to talk with the Finance Committee about the considerations here, so we'll follow up on that. Thank you for bringing this forward. I've certainly had conversations with residents about the ability to have multiple meters in a building, or what's even possible, so look forward to that. And I would like to be added as a co-sponsor as well. Thanks.
May I say, is there anyone who doesn't want to be added as a co-sponsor?
You do or you don't, Counsel?
All right. I think that that's a, that's a good move, so.
Your name should go first.
Huh? No, no, that's okay. Nah, that's all right. They, okay. On Counsel, oh, Counsel O'Malley for the paper. So on Counsel O'Malley's motion to pass this resolve, all those in favor? Aye opposed. The resolve is passed. Counselor O'Malley.
So I appreciate the support, and we passed the resolve. I'm also wondering if maybe we could refer, like, the past resolve to Finance, or do you think a separate paper? Sometimes we've done this, I don't really know how we handle it because they want to have a conversation there. Maybe it can, yeah, maybe it can just be listed on the agenda. Actually, it probably can just be listed on the agenda, because there's no paper behind it necessarily.
I think that that would be a good idea. We'll list it again on the agenda, and then I might make it, what I was looking at was the council committees, because if you know you are on the Public Works Committee, and this is the Public Works Commission, which is a different animal, but I'm just wondering if maybe it would be a joint meeting between Public Works Committee and the Finance Committee, when you actually sit down to talk about this, so, just as a thought.
Is there maybe a way I could like move the discussion to a joint Finance and Public Works Committee? I think that's a great idea. I'd make that motion to move the discussion, not necessarily the paper.
Okay. Who's chair? Counselor Simonelli, but Counsel Winslow and Counselor O'Malley are both members.
Just to refer the discussion of this, of the water rates, to a joint Public Works and Finance Committee meeting.
But I think it's good to send the resolve so the administration knows what's going We passed the result? So we have a motion on the floor to refer the discussion to a joint Public Works Committee and Finance Committee meeting. We have a second by Counselor Cologne Hayes. All those in favor? Aye opposed. Paper's passed, it wasn't a paper, the discussion has passed. Next order of business.
Paper 20-23, resolve. Be hereby resolved that it is the sense of the city council that the Massachusetts Senate and House must enact during the current legislative session, HR 4931, an act relative to pesticides. According to the MSPCA, Angel Animal Hospital, second-generation anticoagulant rodentides, SGARs, are a type of poison used for rodent control that work by stopping the blood clotting processes, causing lethal hemorrhage. SGARs have been extensively used for rodent control, allowing secondary exposure and poisonings in non-target wildlife species, such as birds of prey that mainly feed on rodents or small birds. SGARs are prohibited for residential consumer purchase in the Commonwealth, but commercial use is allowed for licensed pesticide companies when hired to deal with rodent problems.
Counselor O'Malley for the paper.
Just everything about it is so gruesome. Even just like hearing it is gruesome. And I apologize that I had those photographs attached to the agenda. It is, and I appreciate Mr. Murphy coming out and talking to us. This is something that I care about pretty deeply as a former park ranger, and is just a lover of animals, particularly wildlife and domestic animals. I actually contracted with Mr. Murphy and his company, Yankee Pest Control, for, you know, in-house treatment for pests. And other times, what I've noticed is, I've found a number of squirrels that have gotten into maybe baits, bait traps that have been put outside of homes. They get into it, as well as rodents. And it's really a gruesome experience. It's really a sad experience to see an animal kind of bleed from the inside. It was to the point where I was like on Facebook, like, looking for vitamin K, which is the antidote. So if you have pets, you might want to ask your veterinarian for a supply of vitamin K if they ever, ever get into it. And that kind of gets me to the next part of my unfortunate story, is that, you know, when the squirrels particularly get into the, into the anticoagulant rat poison, they eat it, and they kind of go around yard to yard holding it, and at some point, it takes effect and they die, and they drop it wherever they are. And so my dog got into it at 1.2, which is how I learned so much about it, and had to bring her to like, you know, the emergency vet in Woburn. So I do agree that there is a very massive rat problem in our city, but I do think that having, again, this bill is just to study, it's not to ban. I do think studying this is really important. I do think studying this is really important because of the impact it's having on our wildlife as well as our domestic animals. I'm sure we can all kind of sympathize with that. But I also really appreciate what Mr. Murphy stated. And again, this is just a resolve that would, that would ask that the state study the use of this. And it actually, I believe, is looking to restrict it in a greater capacity when it comes to residential consumer use, rather than it being used by licensed pest control companies. So I appreciate your support in, if possible, passing this non-binding resolve. Thank you.
Counseler Cologne Hayes.
Yes, thank you. I would like to support this resolve, especially if it's to look in and study more about what this could do in our area. I've had residents reach out to me, and friends, who their cats actually got exactly what you were explaining. Either a rat had gotten into it, or mouse or something, and then their cat ate it and died. So I've heard, I'm a big lover of nature and animals as well, so it's a gruesome way to die. And so if there is any other way to go about this, I'd love to learn about it. I'm not saying that we, you know, ban it. You're right, this is just something to study more. And especially my constituents who have reached out to me, I would like to definitely support this. Thank you.
Counselor Wenslow.
Yeah, no, I appreciate Counsel O'Malley, you know, really highlighting this. I mean, I know in Ward 6, the past month or so, there's been, first time in my recollection of, like, rats just being found on the sidewalk and dealing with those and being, coming up on C-Click Fix. And obviously, they're, they've, they've taken some bait, whether that's in a house or somewhere, I don't know. But it is of concern, so I really, and, you know, the big picture of, you know, it's great we have eagles back, but then to see that they might be exposed. I definitely think it's a very big thing of concern. My one thing is, like, I think one of the things we may just want to table this for a week or so, I don't know if this is the correct house number. I've looked it up, and there's been a transition. I mean, I went to the link for the website of the MSPCA. That bill seems to have morphed into something else. And I know you mentioned a study. I don't see a study as part of that. It seems like it's an update to the current law that, right now, the current law basically says, like, schools are supposed to be careful about this stuff. And it's adding some things about daycares and universities. And so I don't, I don't know if maybe there's a disconnect between what, what was developed and now that the new legislate, legislation. So I think we, we need to, since we're specifically referring to a piece of legislation, I think we just got to make sure we get that reference correct, because I'm just not finding it here, and I'm finding something a little bit different. I mean, it's important legislation, but it's a little bit different, I, because I don't see a study. But, yeah, I'd like to, that would just be my recommendation, we table it until we make sure we have the right legislative reference. I mean, this may have been drafted in 2022 or 2021, and now it's 2023, and, you know, it's a new legislative session. So I just, I'm confused in that way. So I could say I can show you what I've got, but I'm just not certain, you know, if what you're intending is what, is what is the correct reference, so.
Thank you, Counsel Wenslow. Counselor Linehan. Why didn't you pop up there? Hold on a second, let me turn you on here. There you go.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I, I was also trying to look up the house number. I think because it's the new filing session, it probably is either going to be having a new number, it's passed the House and moving to the Senate this session. So if we can get clarity on that, just as one of the sponsors, I think that would be the right thing to do. I also just, I wanted to call out one of our Ward 3 residents, Linda Amato, who's a licensed wildlife rehabber. She's really educated me a lot on this issue. I know she's in the midst of looking to get an additional certification related to birds of prey, which is pretty exciting, because I do think, as many of us who live, you know, like Counsel Cologne Hayes and I live near the Fells or other wooded parts of the city, there's definitely an uptick in activity with hawks and eagles, which is exciting. But we want to make sure that we're being conservation-minded and doing everything that we can to sort of protect all aspects of the food chain. And I want to thank Counsel O'Malley again for raising this. I do think it's something, again, that I've talked a lot with constituents and pet owners and with Linda about. But I do think it's something that we could lend our support to at the state level to incentivize some action or to push, to find, you know, a solution here, with all due respect to the remarks that we heard. I'm also a Yankee Pest subscriber. I think they do great work, and I want to be fully informed, you know, on what we have before us. But I do think this is definitely worth looking into, so that if there's more that we can do to protect these birds of prey, I do think it's important for the life cycle of the rodents and protecting folks' pets. So thank you to the sponsor.
Counselor Condon.
Thank you, Madam President. I think it's good to bring awareness to this, but Galvin Murphy has been a big part of this community. I know he's a businessman, and this is his business. He basically was asking us to hold back and table this for a while till we get everything together on it. So I'm in favor of tabling this, so we can make sure we got it right. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Condon. Counselor O'Malley?
Yeah, I was just, if possible.
And then?
Unless there's someone before me.
Just me, but that's okay. You can go first.
So I appreciate the, I understand tabling it for a week. I would be willing to table it for a week, or two, two weeks. I think it does have something to do with the new legislative session. You know, it's, it's House State Rep Hawkins, who's really kind of passing this, is kind of an ironic name. And it did pass the House, which is, I think, kind of surprising, because usually the House is the body that's really difficult to get things through. And it's actually, it was in the Senate, but now that we have a new legislative session, it kind of all restarts. So I think probably the bills need to be refiled, and that would be good, because I think they have to file them by January 20th. That would push us beyond the 20th if we go up by two weeks. And then we should be able to get the updated bill number and update it accordingly. And I can check on the language related to the study. So all great feedback, and I would move to table for one week after we hear from Counsel President.
Thank you.
Two weeks.
Two weeks. And I am definitely in favor of tabling it, too. You know, I really, as Counsel Condon said, you know, took Mr. Murphy's words to heart, made me think a little bit more about this. And I have, I guess, three ways to look at it. I live by the Forest Hill Cemetery. I love looking up and seeing a hawk in a tree, so I certainly want to, you know, protect them. But I also have a number of residents down on Salem Street that are inundated by rats, and we need a way to control them. So that's another piece that comes into it. And just the last thing, having Duke, God rest his soul, he's crossed the Rainbow Bridge, not, thank God, not from poison, but last summer he did get into poison up in Maine. And the only thing that I wanted to say, Counsel O'Malley, is just because I didn't want the, your vitamin K comment for someone to hear it out on the public and go buy it and give it to their dog if they ever did get into rat poison, because it does depend on the type of rat poison. It depends on the size of your dog, the age of your dog, how much they ingest it. And a vet won't give you K1 for your dog until they have a blood test. So that's something that you just don't want to give your dog, you know, if you think that they did ingest anything. You definitely want to call Poison Control, which I will tell you, Poison Control for a human doesn't cost anything, but Poison Control for a dog does, when you call them, believe it or not. So have your charge card ready, and then go to the vet. Anyway, so just, just a thought on that. I didn't mean to, just didn't want someone giving their dog K1. So, anyway. With that, I have a tabling motion by Counsel Wenslow, seconded by Counsel O'Malley, for two weeks. All those in favor? Aye opposed. The paper is tabled, or the resolve is tabled for two weeks.
Paper 21-23, resolve. That it is the sense of the City Council that they wish to invite Malden's Language Access Coordinator, Elena Martinez, to speak before the body with an update of the city's new multilingual telephone line.
Okay, so I'm going to turn this over to Counsel Cologne Hayes in just a moment, because it is her resolve, but I just wanted to remind everybody why this is on here. Counsel is bad for last year, because we had so many people putting things on the agenda for one night, that basically, for people to come in and speak with us, that he kind of put in, I'll call it a rule, but asked that everyone put a resolve on there so the council could vote on it. So I've opted to continue that this year, just as we get, get our feet under us and we start to move forward, that we find a way to schedule people and not just have them, you know, every council has the right to call the clerk and put somebody on there, and then all of a sudden we find three people on the agenda, which drags us to 11 or 12 o'clock at night. So that's why we're doing this. And until we can come up with a good calendar mechanism for booking, we'll probably continue to do this. So Counsel Cologne Hayes. Okay, hold on. There you go.
Okay, thank you very much. So as we all know, we have a new Language Access Coordinator, Elena Martinez, who had come before us when she first started with goals and things that she wanted to do for the city. She's been doing some tremendous work. So I wanted to call her for two reasons, to see how, what, the things that she's accomplished or moving forward to, but also to see if she needs help, just to check in. It's a new position. We've never had this here before, and just to see if she needs any support, and also just to hear about how she's been moving along, so.
Seconded by Counsel O'Malley. Any questions? Nope, okay. All those in favor of bringing Elena Martinez in to, for the City Council? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we will work with Elena and Ms. Counselor. I'd appreciate it if you'd work with me, so we can just make sure we coordinate it for a night that we're not totally booked.
Perfect. I should have probably said I also reached out to Elena before I put her on here.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Next order of business, please.
Paper 22-23, committee report. The Joint Committee on Rules and Ordinance and Finance, to whom was referred Paper 7 of 2023, having considered the same, make the following report. Committee recommends this transfer out favorably to the full council.
I know, I know, I'm just, I'll give you a second. Nope, nope, I got it. I was lost for a minute, but I, I've got it now. On Counsel Crow's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor? Aye opposed. Counselor Crow for the committee. Okay, there you go.
Thank you, Madam President. And as you mentioned last week, the ordinance committee and the finance committee met about the, the salary schedules for the librarians. And so this was a three-year contract, that actually they've not, not had a contract in 18 months. So this brings, so the way that it works is we have to put the language in the ordinance, and then the finance kind of follows to sort of fulfill what the language is, if we're all in agreement. So this is, again, a three-year contract. It includes the retro, and it brings them current, and then brings them into 2024. So we unanimously vote on, so I make a motion to enroll.
Okay, I see no questions. On Counsel Crow's motion to enroll, seconded by Counsel McDonald. Clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Counsel Condon?
Yes.
Counsel Crow?
Yes.
Counsel Linehan?
Yes.
Counsel McDonald?
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley?
Yes.
Counsel Wenslow?
Yes.
Counsel President Murphy?
Yes. So that paper is enrolled.
I'd like to make a motion, sorry, to suspend the council rules for the purposes of ordaining. They've been out of contract for 18 months. I think, you know, it's time to move this forward.
Second, okay, on Counsel Crow's motion to suspend council rules for the purposes of ordaining, seconded by Counsel, Counsel Cologne Hayes. The clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Counsel Condon?
Yes.
Counsel Crow?
Yes.
Counsel Linehan?
Yes.
Counsel McDonald?
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley?
Yes.
Counsel Wenslow?
Yes.
Counsel President Murphy?
Yes. The council rules are suspended.
Make a motion to ordain.
On Counsel Crow's motion to ordain, seconded by Counsel McDonald, the clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Counsel Condon?
Yes.
Counsel Crow?
Yes.
Counsel Linehan?
Yes.
Counsel McDonald?
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley?
Yes.
Counsel Wenslow?
Yes.
Counsel President Murphy?
Yes. Okay, the paper has been ordained. Next order of business.
Paper 23-23, committee report. The Standing Committee on Finance, to whom was referred Paper 8 of 2023, having considered the same, make the following report. Committee recommends this transfer out favorably to the full council.
On Counsel McDonald's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Counsel McDonald for the committee.
As Counsel Crow said, this is the accompanying transfer to make good on those promises that we just made in the new salary schedule. This transfer covers the retroactive portions through last fiscal year and will be enough to cover through this fiscal year with some, just a little bit of cushion. And so this passed unanimously in the Finance Committee, following our discussion with Joint Finance and Ordinance. And I do just want to extend the council's appreciation to the good staff of our library and all the work that they do in the community. We've been making good strides in investing our library, in our library in the past year, including increased funding in the last city budget that got us above the state minimum threshold, so that we are no longer requiring state waivers for our funding, so, for our state funding. So we've been making good progress, want to continue that progress, and ask for your support to move this forward and get our good library staff paid.
Make a motion to, you are approving the finance paper.
On Counsel McDonald's motion to approve the finance paper, seconded by Counsel Crow? All those in favor? Oh, excuse me, roll call. Need a roll call on that.
Counsel Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Counsel Condon?
Yes.
Counsel Crow?
Yes.
Counsel Linehan?
Yes.
Counsel McDonald?
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley?
Yes.
Counsel Wenslow?
Yes.
Counsel President Murphy?
Yes. Okay, so, we're into licenses now.
Committee Report 24.
Huh?
Paper 24-23, we're into licenses, yes. Paper 24-23, committee report. The Standing Committee on License, to whom was referred Papers 407-22, 3, 4, 5, and 6 of 2023, having considered the same, make the following report.
On Counsel Condon's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Counsel Condon for the committee.
Thank you, Madam President.
Oops, sorry.
One second, Counsel Condon.
There you go.
Yeah, we met with the compliance people, had no problems with this, and they recommended that we grant. So I would recommend that. And I would say this to the clerk, if you eliminate 369 Salem Street, when you read the next group of licenses, move to grant.
So I'll read them again? And take two separate votes?
Yes. No, I actually, we're going to table, we'll ta, yeah, two separate votes, we'll table
That will still be a vote, don't you?
Yes, it'll still be a vote, right, but we'll table it, okay.
So on Counsel Condon's motion to grant?
Yes, grant the petitions.
On Counsel Condon's motion to grant Papers 407-22, 3-23, 4-23, and 6-23.
All those in favor? Aye opposed. Those petitions have been granted.
And on Counsel?
On motion to table, Counsel Condon?
Yes, this particular license, this was some confusion with ticketing and who's responsible to pay the tickets. We decided, and We decided until, to give the treasurer some time to come back to us in a couple of weeks, so we tabled 369 Salem Street for two weeks.
So on Counselor motions, motion to, Counselor Condon's motion, Counselor Condon's motion to table Paper 523 for 369 Salem Street, seconded by Counselor Cologne Hayes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That paper has been tabled. And the docket is clear. Press for personal privilege. Counselor O'Malley? Sure, now I just, I just lost whoever was next. Was it Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Counsel President.
Oh, wait a second. Did you light up? No, hold on a second.
I was, I was.
Yeah, I, there you go. They moved my stand.
Okay, I'm, I'm good to go, right?
Okay, you're good to go.
Okay. So I wanted to make two quick updates. One is let folks know where we are with the Malden Community Electricity Plan. We will hopefully be hearing from the State Department of Public Utilities, who's the one who needs to ultimately approve our plan this week about the public hearing they need to schedule, hopefully in the next coming weeks. That's part of the process. We are optimistic that will mean things are moving quickly in the coming months, as opposed to the years that it's taken some municipalities. So we'll let you know, and the city will get the word out about that. Stay tuned. And I also wanted to remind folks that on February 1st, Wednesday, February 1st, at 6:00 p.m. here in the council chamber, we'll be having our first Chinese-language town hall. You're probably listening to me say this in English, but we do have Chinese-language flyers that are posted out in City Hall and that have been posted on the city's social media. We're partnering with the Chinese Culture Connection, the Greater Malden Asian American Community Coalition, the Asian Community Development Corporation, and others to create this experience, to provide an overview of city services and our new Language Access Services, working with Language Access Coordinator Elena Martinez. So I think I've mentioned this before, we hope that this will be one of a series of town halls and community engagements in specific languages to help folks access their leaders and their government. So that is February 1st at 6:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. We do plan to provide some food, so folks have something to eat, as well as childcare, and hope to see you there, if that would be useful to you. Thanks.
Thank you. I promised animal control I'd do one more reminder about the coyote forum. Talking a lot about animals tonight. So there's, as Counselor Murphy, Counsel President Murphy had mentioned last week, there's been a change of venue. Instead of having the event a week from Thursday in council chambers, it's actually going to be at the Forestale School, which has a lot more seating capacity and a lot more parking. So again, this is a public safety tips information about living with coyotes. It's going to be on Thursday, the 26th, at 6:30 p.m. in the Forestale Auditorium. And I did want to also mention, because I'm getting this question a lot, we confirmed today that UMA is going to be filming. They're not going to be able to livestream, but they will be recording it, and that will be viewable on YouTube and cable after the fact. So for anyone who can't make it, it is going to be recorded, thanks to UMA, and I will definitely be there, and I hope to see a lot of you there as well.
Counselor Cologne Hayes?
Thank you. I am looking forward to the first Language Access Forum, so, and to the series, and planning for those, that's going to be great. So what I wanted to talk about, though, was Juneteenth planning, believe it or not. It's, we're already starting that, and we're forming a group, and we are looking for some volunteers. So if anyone wants to get involved in community service, especially after Martin Luther King Day, that's a great thing to do, if you want to be involved in your community, you can email me for now. There's going to be a different email, I am not in charge of this committee, but it's kcolonehayes@cityofmalden.org, and I can point you in the right direction. Thank you.
Counselor Winslow?
Yeah, I want to thank the Malden Fire Department, Building Inspector, and others. There was a fire on Stanton Street a few weeks back, and good to know that everybody was safe. And also really want to thank Sarah Rowling and the neighbors on Stan Street for putting together a GoFundMe for the neighbor who, that was very helpful, and they have also our Office of Housing Stability, who's helping the tenant who was burnt out of their apartment to get new housing. So just great to see how the city all comes together to work on that type of thing. And on another note, Nikki Sarah of Bowman Street, who found a stray dog on Home Street, and I just happened to be going down the street and worked with her and Kevin Alkins to make sure the dog owner was found. So I want to emphasize, it was very important that that dog had its tag on. That helped, Kevin did a great job of tracking down the owner through the tag, and also they had the little chip. So it's very important, if you own a dog in our city, they can, you know, literally, the owner was just a few doors down, but they didn't know the dog had gotten out, and it was an 18-year-old dog. So it was, having those little things, it was a very cold day, the dog was shivering, we're very concerned, but, so having those tags and that chip is important, so remember that. Now, a few other things, this weekend, I want to thank everybody, Chinese Culture Connection, for doing the Lunar New Year celebration, and wish everybody in our, the Asian community that celebrates Lunar New Year, that's coming up, actually, kind of this next weekend, but we celebrated a little bit early. I thank Counselor Murphy, Counselor Spatafora, and others who helped put on the MLK Day presentation after a very short window for that to come together, was a wonderful celebration. I think it's, I'm always, you know, impressed when a community can just show what we do to help the people who are neediest and most in crisis. I mean, that really says a lot about our community, and that event was, showed that more than anything else. So everybody around this table, everybody out in the community that was there to honor, there was honorees, and it was a very nice event. A few other things coming up, I will be, I know people, the Future Maplewood Square Committee has been working earnestly to develop a visioning session for Maplewood Square, and I'm happy to say that that session, that series of community forums are going to start on February 4th, 10:00 a.m., so I'll be sending out information on that. I've lined up the Metro Bridge Program of Boston University to help on that, so I think that's an exciting thing. We'll have three forums, and we'll be looking for community input on what people think is important about Maplewood Square. So that's exciting, that's coming together. But Saturday, February 4th, at Salemwood School, we'll start off with a site walk and then do an initial forum, and then we'll have other forums on February 27th and May 1st, and the students and faculty at BU are going to help us out on that, so that's fantastic. And then, then the February 5th, the Maplewood Association is going to have a planning meeting at Patrick's to ask people interested in volunteering for Maplewood Fest, our Fourth of July, and our Halloween party to come out for that. So that's at 3:00 at Patrick's, and it'll be a nice time to meet your neighbors and come out and help Ward Six in the coming year. Thank you, great.
Thank you, Counselor Winslow. And from the chair, a couple of things, not to be outdone by Counselor Winslow, his neighbors, city clerk, and myself last week ran into a Ward Five resident who had just found a lost dog, who was shivering also.
Thank you. Kevin Alkins would take our call.
And at 10:00 at night, our ACO officer, Kevin Alkins, took our call. In the meantime, there was a happy reunion. The individual who found the dog, Ward Five resident, Ms. Hayes, right?
Kathy Heinz.
Kathy Heinz, I had the age, Kathy Heinz. She called the police department, and I guess about within a half an hour, the owners of the dog had also called the police department. So don't know if the dog had a tag or not, but they were reunited that evening, so, and the dog was kept safe in a neighbor's household until then. But talking about licenses, I just leaned over to our city clerk to ask about the licenses, because this is the time of year that they do come out, and she said they will be going out, if you currently have a dog that's registered in the city, your renewal license, your renewal application will be going out in the mail next week, so you can send it right back in via mail, or you can come in into City Hall. And it is important that all dogs, no matter size, a lot of people think pocketbook dogs don't need to be registered, but it is really important that all dogs be registered, so that we know that they're here. God forbid an outbreak of any, you know, size occurred within the canine community would be able to contact you. So, you know, please do get your dog registered. And one of the things, just to add to Counselor Linehan's comment about the wildlife meeting next week, it is also going to be posted on the city website as soon as MATV or UMA actually gets the video done, it will be posted on the website also. The, but just not to wait till next week, I just cannot say this enough at every meeting, we are living with coyotes, they are, I mean, they look like, half of them look like German shepherds. They're not aggressive, and they will stay not aggressive unless someone starts feeding them. When they start to really interact with the human population is when you start to have problems. So please, 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 do not feel sorry for them, do not think it's the neighborhood cat that you're going to leave food out for. You know, don't put any meat out, don't put any dog food out. They are quite healthy and quite lovely-looking, and we take, obviously, our woods take very good care of our coyotes, because they're populating and looking lovely. So, anyway, but please do not feed them, do not try to interact with them, do not try to get too close to them to take pictures, just, you know, keep your distance and admire them from a distance. So that's really all that I had to say. Oh, except for, I did have one last thing to say. I think Ms. Louise is not here anymore, but it was not me. Thank you for giving me credit, Counselor Winslow, but not when to take credit where credit's not due. It was Counselor Spatafora, the mayor's office, Kathleen Manning Hall, Maria Louise, who all came together to actually work with the North Shore Black Women's Association to host the fabulous MLK celebration that we had here in City Hall Chambers yesterday. It truly was a wonderful event, and the amount of people that turned out to part was very, very impressive. So, and it was great to honor the honorees, which included those in the, those groups in the community who are doing a tremendous amount of service throughout the years, Bread of Life, Malden Cares, Mary Malden, Malden Toy Drive, two more, Warming Center, and the North Shore Black Women's Association, yes, they were actually on it, yes. They didn't just put it together, they actually got on it, too, yes. So it was, it was really a great day, and it just, I think, showed the Malden, in the Malden community, how much service goes on, you know, during the year, you know, without any fear and fear, just people out there, making sure that our community members are taken care of in whatever aspect that they need to. It was, it was great to see, and, yeah, I think the mayor and Counselor Spatafora and the Black Women's Association, for, North Shore Black Women's Association, for actually pulling this all together and making it happen. So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn by Counselor Condon, seconded by Counselor McDonald. All those in favor? Aye, opposed. Council meeting is adjourned for today.